[S01][S01]...
Recording in progress.
Before we begin the regular board meeting tonight, we have three public hearings that we have to conduct. And we're going to do those first. So welcome everyone. Before we start that, let me just say for the benefit of those who are joining us via Zoom, that the community members will be able to view the meeting and provide public comment by means of Zoom. Please be aware that the Zoom meeting audio visual may not always be reliable and is a bit off for convenience. Ultimately, it won't cut out the coverage of the meeting. And just to let everyone know that the full meeting is recorded on CATV and it's available for people to look at a day or two after the meeting. So we will begin with our first public hearing. Public hearing on bond issue one. And I will open the public hearing.
Recording in progress.
Let me read. Before we begin the first board meeting tonight, we have three discussion public hearings that we have. Public hearing, screening of the vote, see what we can do those sort of votes. Welcome to grains, appropriate amount before we start that. 15,341,000. For the benefit of those who are building renovations, Zoom construction projects, and community members will be able to, love, use the meeting and their own private community insurance by more to Zoom. 340 programs, the zones, the phones, or notes, visual in accordance with the main obligations. Be reliable, finance, and act of law, RS8,33. Ultimately, it won't. And on the last review point, issue and negotiation of certain ones. For those, and to determine the date, maturity, interest rate, the estimate details, and study the laws or notes. Look at, and to raise an appropriate sum. A day or two. 158,525 dollars. So we will begin the session. The first or first or public hearing, such upon our notes. And would hear upon bond issue seven, we have, and I would like, any available questions?
Recording in progress.
Let me start finally reading. Before we begin the first board meeting tonight, we have three discussion public hearings. We have a public hearing, screening of the vote, see what we can do those sort of votes. Welcome to grains, appropriate hearing. Before we start that, 15,341,000. For the benefit of those who are building renovations, Zoom project, and community members will be able to, love, use the meeting and their own private community insurance by more to Zoom. Every number of years, the zones, the phones, or notes, visual in accordance with the main obligations. Be reliable, finance, and act of law, RS8,33. I don't find all of those literally. Hands up on the air, if you have any questions. If you have any questions, and to determine the date, maturity, interest rate, the estimate details, and study the laws or notes. Look at. And to raise an appropriate sum. 158,525 dollars. Ready. The first or the second or third or public hearing, such upon our notes. And would hear upon bond issue seven, we have, and I would like, any available questions?
Recording in progress.
Let me start finally reading. Before we begin the first board meeting tonight, we have a public hearing. Let's go. Public hearings. We have a public hearing. Second public hearing, screening of the vote, see what we can do those sort of votes. The appropriate hearing. The hearing, starting at 15,341,000. For the benefit of those who are building renovations, Zoom project, and community members. Second, 20,000 to, love, the meeting. And the appropriate community insurance, 20,000 to, every number of years, the zones, the phones, or notes. Be reliable, finance, and act of law, RS8,33. I don't find all of those literally. Hands up on the air, if you have any questions. If you have any questions, and to determine the date, maturity, interest rate, the estimate details, and study the laws or notes. Look at. And to raise an appropriate sum. 158,525 dollars. Ready. The first or the second or third or public hearing, such upon our notes. And would hear upon bond issue seven, we have, and I would like, any available questions?
Recording in progress.
Public hearing. Let me start finally reading. Before we begin the first board meeting tonight, we have a public hearing. Public hearing. Public hearing. Second public hearing, screening of the vote, see what we can do those sort of votes. The appropriate hearing. Starting at 15,341,000. For the benefit of those who are building renovations, Zoom project, and community members. Second, 20,000 to, love, the meeting. And the appropriate community insurance, 20,000 to, every number of years, the zones, the phones, or notes. Be reliable, finance, and act of law, RS8,33. I don't find all of those literally. Hands up on the air, if you have any questions. If you have any questions, and to determine the date, maturity, interest rate, the estimate details, and study the laws or notes. Look at. And to raise an appropriate sum. Ready. The first or the second or third or public hearing, such upon our notes. And would hear upon bond issue seven, we have, and I would like, any available questions?
Recording in progress.
Let me start finally reading. Before we begin the first board meeting tonight, we have a public hearing. Public hearing. Public hearing. It will be on the table, discussing the funding, the screening, and the fact that it's been agreed by the public. And a person for, so, we're discussing by talking to each other, we can, we can, yes, probably.
I think we didn't remember to match the agenda. And Megan wouldn't have known that. So I appreciate the extra effort. We went to go back and figure that out. We would just say unfinished business. And then let's say we went to a budget. We would just call budget number nine and go forward with that. So that's not my That's just a unique way that we do it here. So thanks.
Is there anything else on the minutes for the public meeting? Okay, let's vote on the motion, please. On in favor. Seven in favor, not opposed. Minutes amended and corrected. Now, we have non-public, non-public meeting minutes. Which, first of all, let me just, let's take a motion to accept the non-public minutes. And then we'll sort out which document we're looking at.
I'm making motion to accept the non-public meeting minutes from December eighth, twenty twenty one.
Okay, second part of the
And that should be the single sheet there.
Okay, so the first part then, that that motion has already been moved to regular, to regular minutes, correct?
Yep.
So that, that can come up. Um, and that you know in public session, that's per R S eight ninety-one, eight-three. Now, I think that's what we decided appropriate R S eight reference. Votes were all correct. Description of that was discussed. This discussion of legal guidance, does that in fact reflect what the non-public portion was about?
I believe so. I thought we were discussing like Joanne. I thought we were discussing like Joanne had gone and asked Jim.
Okay.
It could have been a non-meeting for legal guidance, but the non-public was asked about.
Okay, okay. And anything else that done, anything else that was done falls under the heading of quote, non, non-meeting. Okay, are there any questions or comments about this thus far? Okay, let's vote on it. All is favor as amended. Seven, no, no, no votes as accepted.
Ask a clerical item. So do you want me to make that amended change? Is that what Megan's gonna make file? If it's something that you create, you want me to change it? Yeah, great.
Thanks. Are there any nominations for designations?
I do not think there are. I do not think there are any yet.
Thank you. Let's do the report. Miles.
Hi, my name is Miles Davis, and I'm the moderator of the eleven technical council. I'll start the update a little bit about student life. Students got a much needed grant for some of the race that definitely contributed a lot to us. But a number of voting cases is still up to some students. We need two more council updates for a breakbeat on the successful Winter Fest and Allen Church. And we also issued a second round of grants this year to total six hundred and seventy-five. I mentioned this at the last board meeting, but I would like to reiterate tonight that eleven technical council does support the proposed school district building renovation. And my last part of the update is an update on the student collective that the last board meeting I would ask to provide one. And so I met with the new advisor of the group, which is Senator Carter. And so he's taken over as advisor for the group this year. I gave him some background information, but I also just want to mention that, as you said, you're legal to attend the board meetings in time. The board have all tried to recognize you. For the family members. What we did mention is the group was established officially as a co-curricular earlier this school year. And basically, since the group has figured out changing its name from students and fellow collective to a different name in order to be more inclusive. A name that's not such a completely agreed upon yet, namely, now is the first thing in inclusivity at LHS. And then they will be decided upon through and again, it's not officially changed in any way. If you share with me, we see. Something that they're working on right now is their planning announcements during LHS midterm to be celebrating our new degree junior. And the group is also looking at the possibility of incorporating students from London No School and Dartmouth. There's also student representatives who work with Senator Carter on the guidance on media objectives. You have good perspective helping with meeting group. And I was also asked about how members of the group felt, and I spoke with a council member who's also part of the student collective. And they said that they did feel included and that the group approved years ago. I also have access to group round rules, their discussions. That's based because it's very productive and inclusive and comfortable for anybody. And the nature of the board, the big government, I can certainly share those. But that could be my last thing updated.
Questions for Miles? Thanks very much. In our unfinished business, we now have scheduled a discussion of the equity surveys. And I wonder if the best way to start is, is
Yes, Dale, I'm gonna make you a post, and then when you finish, can you put the post back to me? And I think that we will be able to see it.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, for some reason, my other screen is not working properly. All right.
The best, the best way to proceed here might be if you're, you're prepared to talk a little bit to the whole board for just a couple of minutes about the process and where we currently are. And then we all have copies of the latest versions of the surveys. And maybe we can open it up at that point to questions.
Great, that's, that sounds great. All right, so I'll just give a quick introduction. Hello, everyone. My name is Deo, Deo Muano. I run a consulting firm called Deo Muano Consultancy. I've been working with the community for the last three and a half months. And we've been working diligently to help you all come up with an equity audit that will go out to the entire community. Part of our process at the beginning was to get to know your community first in order to make sure that what we're asking is customized and relevant to your community versus a generic equity audit that might not be relevant to your specific community. So we spent about two months where it was open to the entire community to connect with my team and I. Different folks reached out to us from parents, teachers, different school board members. And part of that was for us to, to understand what, you know, the landscape of, of the community when it comes to diversity, equity, and inclusion in, in terms of the student experience as a whole within your school district. So we, we interviewed, at this point, I believe, close to thirty-five to forty-five individuals. We also were able to connect with the student group at the high school. That was really, really helpful. And then after those interviews, we started crafting the actual survey questions. We realized that it was going to take a little bit of time in order to get to a point where the survey was adequate enough that represented your community as a whole, but also more importantly, that that, that the targeting was different in terms of how some of the questions were formatting. For, for example, for fifth and sixth grade versus, you know, seventh and eighth, or even high schoolers. Same thing with the survey questions for the parents versus the survey questions for the employees of the district. Once we were done, kind of the first draft, we wanted to make sure that it was an inclusive process as possible to be able to start sharing it to different stakeholders so we can get their feedback, knowing that we were going to make changes along the way. Once we started to share it, so we invited the administration group to be able to provide the initial feedback. We invited parent groups for all the different grades level that I just mentioned. And they started to provide feedback and we started to make some changes. And part of that was really to understand the perspectives of the community, knowing that, you know, certain things that we might have not been versed in in terms of some, some references, in terms of how you, you might see a guidance counselor or a so just different terminology in that extent. But more importantly, also making sure that the language was relevant for the different age group. So where we are now, as of tonight, we have a very condensed version of the surveys. And we've engaged with all the different stakeholders that initially provided feedback to us initially when we put the service together. And part of the conversation today is to hope that we can transition into finalizing a so we're ready to, to share it out to the community soon. As of this afternoon, we actually received a little bit more feedback from regarding the high school survey. So there's some, some minor changes that we have to make in there. But for the most part, the surveys are almost ready to go out to, to the community. So I'll pause there and throw it right back to you all for your questions.
One of the things I'll mention just to add is that we now have five surveys. So the elementary one is going to be for fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. The middle school is seventh and eighth grade. The high school's nine, twelve. Then a separate parent and a separate staff survey. So there's, there's now five.
Any questions or feedback for Dale? MJ.
I appreciate that the students at different grade levels, especially in the middle school, will have a different comprehension of the survey, but I guess I'd like to know a little more discussion of calling that an elementary survey for five and, four, five and six, but particularly the five and six. When they're really, we call them middle schoolers in every other context. What kind of message are we?
Yeah, that's not something I thought about in my head, and that's appreciated. We can definitely say fourth grade through sixth grade survey. So thanks. I didn't even pick up on that. Thank you.
I do think that the, speaking of the elementary, the fourth through sixth grade survey now, I think it's vastly improved. So congratulations on that, because I think it really does now target the ages of the kids who will be taking it, which I think is helpful, and I think it will be a more valuable tool because they will understand it more. So I'm grateful for the changes you all made there.
I had a question about, a series of questions that are on the high school and the parents and maybe the employees. I didn't check that one. Then the high school survey is questions thirty-nine through forty-two. And it starts about in everyday power struggles between students, teachers, parents, school board members, principal and superintendent. Who has the more or least power at this time? To me, these questions seem like they might be open to interpretation. So I'm just curious, Deo, for your other clients, how have they used the responses to these questions to help them become more diverse and inclusive?
I think, thank you for that question. I think in a lot of the work that we do, when people start, there's, there's a couple of perspective here. One is when people start thinking about changes, right? They, a lot of times it's what, what power do they have? What agency do they have to actually bring change to this particular thing? So part of that questions, that question specifically comes from a combination of the work that we've been doing where we, we like to ask that question because it doesn't necessarily mean, you know, it's end all be all, but it gives you a sense of where people think who actually has control, right? And part of that is, as you look through the data, it also helps to be able to decipher and be more clear around, hey, you know, there's different folks with, that make up this community. They have different autonomy, and this is how we can kind of move this effort and work forward without a relying on one person over another, if that's really the case within your community, right? As you, as you kind of reflect on the data result when it comes in. That's how we've used it in many of the groups and the school districts that we've worked with. As being able to look at the data in order to figure out, you know, if, if most people think that this group has more power versus others, what's, what's the dynamic? What's causing that? And, and as you think about your solutioning and some of the, you know, the things that might come out of it, maybe part of that is to just be able to articulate and communicate properly so people know, hey, within the, the community that you're in, you actually have agency. So that's how we've utilized it in, in, with different settings that we've worked with.
Thank you.
MJ.
When I was looking at the surveys, I was actually a little taken aback by the length of the survey. So I'm kind of wondering, are these, you know, forty-seven, fifty-seven question surveys typical of the work that you do? And if so, what is your typical response rate, especially given that the surveys have so many questions?
Is that specifically on the, the family and the employee one? Because I think the, the other ones are
I'd say, well, I think all of them. I mean, a fifty-seven question survey seems pretty lengthy, whether you're a student or a parent.
Yeah, so with many of the groups that we work with, anywhere between fifty to seventy questions, an average is anywhere between fifteen to twenty for two twenty minutes. Depending on the demographic that you're, you're, you're providing the survey with. And the other thing regarding the work that we do, it's less about, sometimes, yes, the, the, the length makes sense, but sometimes it's less about the length. It's more of how the survey is being presented to the participants that are, that are engaging with it in order to, to encourage people's engagement to complete it. So we spend a lot of time just talking about how is this going to be deployed? How, you know, what are certain things that needs to be put in place in order to make sure that, you know, people make a commitment to, to be honest and, and, and be, you know, take the proper amount of time to provide their feedback. So this is typical in most of the organi, the, the school districts and organizations that I work with. This, this is a typical length.
And what's your typical response rate on these type of surveys?
It depends on the organization. It could be any, I've, I've had communities where it's anywhere between seventy-five to eighty-five percent to communities where it's forty to fifty percent. It just, it just depends. It depends on how people see themselves in, in the intention behind the survey. And, you know, the, the accessibility that's presented alongside the survey in order to make sure people know of it, but also have the right tools for them to engage and complete it.
As part of that, just to follow up and provide more information for those who are on the board and listening. So we plan to have our counselors and school administrators meet virtually with Deo to talk about how best to administer this. And then we are going to have our elementary students do it when they would normally go to see their counselor. So it's a time with the person that they know and support when they're taking it. For the middle school students, I believe, we'll be organizing, organizing it through advisory. So there's people, once again, who know the students, and it's a separate time. Same thing with the high school. So we're providing time within the day for students to, to take the surveys, which will give us a high number of at least student response because we can kind of in some ways control that. Next week, so after we have the final, I'll be sending a superintendent's letter out that will have PDFs. And for one week, parents would have the opportunity to review and to opt out. So we don't want to have a student take this if their parents aren't comfortable with them taking it. And they would let the school know that they're opting out. And then we'll have two full weeks for parents and staff to complete the surveys. I'll be asking the principals if perhaps they, instead of a staff meeting, one time, they could allow staff time to do it. And we're looking at an analysis in February, early March, coming back to the board. And then working with Deo to create the strategic plan goals. And then bringing the strategic plan back to the board late April, early May, is what we're thinking about for rollout of this. I just hope that provides just kind of what our next steps are going to be. And continuing to engage parents in regard to the questions that are being asked and how people feel comfortable taking it. Or if they decide not to, we, we understand.
So when, when do you plan to, to push this out to in your superintendent's letter?
We will finalize the high school, and we hope to get the, the PDFs out next week. That will go for a week. And then the two weeks we're thinking will be the, the last two weeks in January, or so close, it might be the last week in January, first week in February. But I do want to have consistent for two weeks for the staff and the parents to respond.
Are you going to do anything, revisit what you said before about staff completing it?
Yeah, one of the, one of the things we're gonna talk at, salt about is if there's a staff meeting where we would give time for the staff to, to participate in the survey.
Parent family survey, are there any ways that we can encourage people to do that?
The best way is to have the, my letter go out, the principal's letters go out. We are looking at if there are specific languages where we might need translation, what those languages might be, how can we support that? If, if virtual isn't a good way to connect, or I mean electronically, there might be some families who we know don't have internet and things like that. We'd make sure that they would get paper copies. So we're trying to look holistically as we can to best ways to get this out. There'll also be in-school connections. So if people, if a person has trouble and needs help filling it out, we're gonna make those connections. The actual survey questions would go to Deo because he and his consultancy created the survey. Those wouldn't come to me. And if there's help that people need, it would go through the schools to provide that support.
Stephen.
This may have been covered, I'm not sure, but you said you're gonna push out the surveys by PDFs, but on the receiving end, is it a PDF that the recipient has to print and write in? Or is it an electronic PDF that they can complete electronically and it gets sent back electronically?
Yeah, we'll either do a PDF, or if I do it as a Survey Monkey, which is what everyone else is gonna get when you actually do it, parents might get frustrated that they're trying to fill it out when all I'm doing is sharing the questions in advance to opt out. So we'll figure out a way for the first week to let the parents To let the parents know, these are the questions that are going to be asked and you can opt out of taking it. The actual tool, the instrument is through survey monkey. And so we, we already asked, can we make sure that it's done, um, can be done by a phone? Cause a lot of our parents just use their phone and Deo has said that he and his team can, um, do it that way too.
I think it might be, and when you're talking about getting the word out, it might be helpful to send the link to the parent organizations, the. And the student organizations that, because sometimes when we have it from the, from the superintendent letter, people miss things in the. Mass of superintendent letters. So just another forum to get it out.
Well, one of the things I'm going to do is I usually send superintendent letters on Friday, unless there's something that comes up. I was going to do a non-Friday superintendent's letter that's specific to this topic. And that way we thought it would catch people's attention just for exactly what you were saying, but there's a lot in my letters. I'm trying to get it up. Thanks for that idea about the PTOs and, and other places.
Just, just on the off chance that someone didn't read the superintendent's letter. I don't mean anything by that. Um, can, can, can the principals and their weekly updates do it as well?
Absolutely. Yeah. It's a push through my letter, also push through their letters. Well, we might send, uh, like, uh, for those who are on Twitter, I could have Diane do a little note, like remember to, to fill it out. However, many ways we can reach people, that's what we're going to try to do. I don't want to do something that's a phone message because I only do that when I want people to do something like an action, like a snow day or something like that. So. That's, those were our thoughts. Did you want to add anything else to that, Deo, as far as our next steps?
I, I think, uh, one of the things that we've experienced within the last month of, the last couple of months of working with your communities, those we've engaged with have been very. You know, very collaborative and the hope is any reinforcement that we can receive from, you know, the community that we've engaged with thus far. It'd be super helpful to help push this out. Um, I, I'm not sure, you know, what other flexibility as, as a, as a district you have in. You know, pushing this out, but any, any innovative ideas, if, you know, if there's other partners out there in the community that could just help. You know, push, push this, especially for the, the family one, you know, the, the students one and the, the faculty ones. The teachers and, and staff, I'm not really worrying too much about that. I think the, the family ones. It's going to need a little bit of reinforcement at different angles. And we're hoping to the, the student groups, at least for the high school, that there could be some. You know, they can encourage their, their parents and, and, you know, their colleagues to, to, uh, encourage their parents to be able to complete a. The PTO group that I, I've met with and hopefully there's a good channel across, you know, in terms of helping to, um. To encourage people to participate because this, this, it's been a community effort, right? Like we, we drove. The, you know, the, the framework and how everything got compiled, but a lot of the feedback that you've all provided. Have contributed to what this final version, close to final version is. Um, so hopefully, you know, those who've communicated with us can. Also reinforce that. So more people can feel comfortable in providing it, providing feedback.
I said, one more, um, when you're past, when you're doing the PDF, I think it would be helpful for that version to say something like. Student version for review or have a watermark or something on it that indicates that it is just for review purposes. Cause I think if, if it looks like what it is, I think that frustration that, um, Steve was just pointing to is going to get. So some kind of heading that says, this is for review purposes only. This is what your students will see, some kind of something to make it more clear that this is not actually the thing you're supposed to print out and turn in.
Anything else?
I said, one more, um, question or comment about the last question on the parent survey, question fifty three, asking how many years your students have attended school? It looks like it's single select, but there's an option for, this is the only district my students have ever attended, which could also be the case that they were in there for like five years. So I don't know if like. It's going to kind of like skew the data. People don't know what to choose or that option should just be not included and only have the years, but it's, it could be. I don't know, not result in accurate data perhaps.
Yeah, this, 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 this is a great, great feedback around that. One of the reason is. Part of some of, some of those demographic questions at the end, they're intentional that way because. Sometimes people are opting in and opting out of your district. So it, it's, it's, you know, someone might've been in the district for. So we just wanted to make sure that we're, we're providing options there for those who want to be a little bit more specific of, you know, how long they've been in the district versus those who haven't. So, yeah.
But if I, if I have a kid who's been in the district for five years and this, this is the only district that the kid has been in, can I pick both options? Should I pick both options? Am I mistaken on this? I don't know.
I agree. I actually had that same thought.
You can, you can pick e- either or whichever one that you feel most comfortable in, in terms of how you, you want to reflect on it.
Okay. But then like, so if some parents pick, this is the only district my students have attended, does that somehow skew the data if we're looking at like. How long all of our students have been in the district? I mean, I don't know what if, I guess it depends what we're looking for in the outcome, but. We might get different types of responses.
Right. No, that, that makes sense. Cause on the top, there's, they're also selecting, uh, what, what grade. What school district their students go to and then what, what, uh, what grade their students are in. And then at the end, you know, there, there's ways to sift through the data if, if you're trying to, you know, identify either. The length of time the person's been in the district versus, um. You know, what grade their students in or how long their students spend in the district. So whichever one, I, I don't think it's, I don't think it'd be. It won't sway the data that much depending on which, which answer someone answers.
Thank you.
Anything else? Neil, thank you very much. Uh, first of all, for, for coming tonight and talking to us, but. Also for the tremendous amount of work and this goes to Joanne and her team as well, that's been involved in putting these together and, uh. I know we all look forward to, um, to seeing the results in, um. February, March.
Appreciative, Richard, and thank you to everyone and new board, board members that I have and engage with. Nice to meet you all. Hopefully I en- engage with you throughout this process and those who've. Participated in some of those sessions that we've had, uh, super, super appreciative. I, I already kind of feel like part of your community within the last three months of spending time. With your community. So, um, like again, this, this is a baseline, right? Some of the data that's going to come out of, there might be some deeper dive around. So I, I don't want people to feel like, you know, the data that comes out is be all end all. It's an opportunity to say, okay, here, you know, different things that we've learned. What does this mean? How do we, let's dive deeper in order to figure out what kind of solutions we can put in place moving forward based on some of these things. So I just wanted to. To kind of give that, that future ahead as before we get, uh, you know, some of the stuff that's going to come back and how it's going to drive through. But again, I appreciate you all. Being able to provide feedback and, um, allowing me to, to get to know your community. And I'm excited for kind of the next step of launching out, launching this and encouraging your community to participate.
Thank you. Can you make me the host again before you leave?
Okay.
Talk to you soon.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. All right. Make host. I think I've done it. We're good.
Yeah, I'm the host now.
So Joanne, would you like to get the, uh, the attorney on the line so we can go on to items?
I texted during that to let him know that we will be heading there shortly and. Hello, Stephen. I've made you the host. Can you hear us? Okay?
I can't hear you. Hello there. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So what we're, what we're doing now is talking about the, the warrant articles. We need to approve the warrant articles for the, uh. Deliberative session in the ballot. And then when that's done, we need to assign board members to each warrant article and we can talk more about that when we, when we get to it. Joanne, is there something that you wanted Stephen to talk about before, uh, or just take questions or, or what?
Well, I was hoping that we could do, and unfortunately where is this located in your pack, in our packet? Was it right after the surveys?
No, I think it's after the.
It's after Tim's spread.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Before the minute, before the policy stuff.
All right. Thank you. Quite a lot in this packet tonight. Okay. Um, what I, what might work well, Tim, is Tim, you usually, uh, go through them and read them. And then if there are any questions for Stephen, and at that time we could actually assign them if you want to combine, who wants to do it at the same time. So, um, you want to kick it off, Tim? Please?
So, um. At the top of it, of course, is, uh, where the, uh, annual meeting, the first session, the annual meeting and the. Second session of the annual meeting is, that's a deliberative session, the official ballot voting. Article one is always, uh, it's, it's on the warrant to indicate what you're going to be voting for. Uh, three members of the school board each for a three-year term, uh, school district clerk or treasurer and a moderator for each for a one-year term. The second article has to be, if there's going to be a, a long-term borrowing article, it has to be second. So that's why that's next. The verb is there is, um, the, the same basically that we just did during the public hearing, except this has been looked at by. Stephen and some others to make sure that we don't have any commas and stuff messed up. So to see if the district will vote to raise and appropriate fourteen million, three forty one. For building renovation and construction projects at Hanover Street School and Lebanon High School. And authorize the issuance of fourteen million, three forty one of bonds or notes. In accordance with the provisions of the municipal finance act. And to authorize the school board to issue and negotiate such bond or notes to bonds or notes. Still missing that. And to determine the dates, maturities, interest rates and other details of such bonds or notes and to raise and appropriate the sum of three fifty eight, five twenty five from taxation. For the first year's debt service payments on such bonds or notes. Missed it. I think, I thought it caught the S's, but. And to authorize the school board to accept on behalf of the school district, any federal, state or private funds that may become available to fund the product, project. And to use such funds to reduce the amounts of bonds or notes issued for the project or to make debt service payments on such bonds or notes. Three fifths ballots, that ballot vote required. And then you'll see there's blanks in there tonight. Hopefully you'll give me a, a recommendation of yes or no. Well, you have to give me a recommendation tonight.
Do we have to?
Before we move, yeah, go ahead, Joanne.
I was just going to quickly say, do we have to add abstain? Cause we have two board members who are not voting tonight.
That's what we did in the past is we added abstain or absent.
I, I'd like to talk about that a little bit if, if we, if we might, because we've had. We've been back and forth and we've had confusion in prior years as to just what the, uh, this vote tally represents. And my concern is that, you know, there are, there are people on this board who, who favor this and people who don't favor it. And we've, we've voted on this before, and I think the vote on this is, uh, was, was eight to one. And that is the best reflection of how the board feels about this. And I'm not sure that it would be. Accurate or even fair to. Take a vote tonight when, when the article is all written. And really, I mean, if we're, if we're just voting whether or not to approve the language. Uh, I'm not sure that that's the tally that, that belongs in here. Because I think it conveys a rather different message to say the school board recommends an article by a vote of eight to one, which is. What the real support is to say, school board recommends this by an, uh, by a vote of, uh. What, what will it be? Five. Five to one, five to one to two. You know, so, so why would we not? Just at this point, insert the, the number of the original, the, the tally of the original vote.
That makes sense to me, Stephen. We have the minutes where it was brought forward and the board voted who was present at that time. And it's recorded. So would those votes at that time, uh, be put into here under the yes and no? In this case, it would be vote of eight, yes, one, no.
I think the intent of the structure of having a bond hearing. Is that the board waits to vote until the public has an opportunity to provide comment. And obviously you had your bond hearing earlier tonight. Uh, I was observing. And I saw that there were no, um, comments for the board to take into consideration. But I think that the idea is that the recommendation by the school board, the one that shows up on the ballot, that is. Doesn't take place until after that public hearing has, has, has happened. Uh, and so if tonight you happen to have, uh, less members, uh, than you did when you previously thought about. This article, uh, then that's something that can certainly be explained, uh, at the deliberative session. Uh, you know, that the, the recommendation that you see before you is five to whatever to whatever. But that is really not a reflection of people changing their minds. It's just that two of the in-favor votes happen to not be present tonight. So I think they, maybe that's a long way of saying that I think the recommendation should happen tonight. Based on the board that you have with you tonight.
Go ahead, Lil.
I have a question. Is the, the vote tally? Essential? I mean, do we have to include the vote tally as part of our recommendation?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. That's why I just wanted to make sure.
There was actually a warrant article about that a couple of years ago.
Right.
Because they said we have to put it in. And we need to have this vote tonight in order for you to get the warrant article forward in time for deliberative session on February fifth.
Does it have to be tonight?
That's.
We can't wait till the next meeting. That's too late. So it doesn't have to be tonight. We have a couple of weeks, but the next meeting is. Pushing it.
Pushing it or impossible? No, I, I think, I, I think, I think it matters. I mean, don't, don't get me wrong. I, I would hate. I mean, while, while I am the dissenting vote on this, I'm, I would hate to see. You know, you know how people look at numbers like this and, and I would, I would hate to see, uh.
Well, and I think.
That, that, this little clerical thing be, be responsible for switching votes.
And I understand your point, but then if you kick the can down the road another two weeks or whatever Tim says. How do we guarantee that all nine of us are going to be here then, especially, you know, given.
Oh, I think if people know what's at stake, they'll be here.
What?
If people know what's at stake, they'll be here.
Well, not if they have COVID in there and quarantine or isolation, whatever the proper term.
They can be here remotely if they're in COVID or quarantine, right? They can, we can vote remotely. I mean, people can, can attend remotely and vote. We know that that's part of our policy. But yeah, it's a good point. Who knows? I mean, things come up, so I, I get your point, but.
I think also it, I, I understand the idea of explaining it at the deliberative session, which I'm actually less concerned about than explaining it on the ballot. Like the, that's going to be more confusing for the voters as opposed to the people who are at the deliberative session. Cause we can say this at the deliberative session. It was a clerical thing. It, this is what it is, but then we have to put this language still.
Like twenty voters out of.
Right. Twenty voters out of three thousand that come up or whatever.
Stephen, have you ever seen a school board that puts note, the, the vote of the board on this particular topic was taken on December thirteenth? That vote was eight to one. The vote below reflects. Something else so that the voters that are just coming in and seeing it that day get both pieces of information?
I've not seen that. Um, I don't know how that would be reviewed by a court. Uh, you know, what goes on the ballot, uh, is, is typically thought of as pretty well structured by what the law. Says must be on the ballot. Uh, I can tell you that the, you have to make your recommendation no later than January thirty first. Because that's the last day that you can post your warrant. So if you have a meeting date or, uh, can come up with a special meeting date where you're going to have more membership present. You could certainly wait to, uh, vote on this particular article or other articles until you had a more full board.
So that, so the answer to that, I, I like how you had that right into fingertips. It took me twenty minutes to page it. So we do have a board meeting before the thirty first. It's tight, but we, it is Thursday morning.
Should we just bring this back on the twenty sixth and we, that would still give time to do the script for deliberative session? And I don't know if we're going to do, if the board decides to bring it to the next meeting, we should probably do them all at the next meeting. Cause otherwise it's going to be. Right. And they're going to say, these don't add up. So, right.
Is there any objection to tabling this until the next meeting?
I guess, I guess my only comment would be then, I mean, at the end, if we end up in the same situation in two weeks, it is what it is. We're going to have to go with it. So. We can try to manage it, but it may not work out for us as long as we all understand that.
I mean, Tim, for you, for you, I mean, the only, the, what you would have to do. Before the drop dead date would be to just drop in the numbers. I mean, everything else could be ready to go. Correct? Finally, you can probably drop in the numbers.
If we did it on the twenty sixth, I would have it ready for signature on the twenty seventh. And you would have to make sure that you sign it that right away, please. Like you'll get an email because we'll do it electronically. Like you'll get an email because we'll do it electronically. And I need you to sign it so I can get it over to the school district clerk for her to post it.
I remember having to sign up on these. I mean, can you, I mean, you, we pretty much know, well, no, we don't know who's going to be here. Yeah. Okay.
No, and, and the system, the state system is set up so that you know, do a final, I put the numbers in there and I put it in the state and then like it goes to the state and they approve it for actually basically for posting. So you, you can't really short circuit and do print most of it because it gets entered electronically now, sort of in the gate that everything's done. You know, I have most of it. I have the budget stuff all done. So, I mean, it is possible. I I understand.
Or do we trust that the voters are going to see all of these on the same day in a row? And they're going to notice that the votes always have two people abstaining. So do you think they would then surmise that they were not at the meeting?
Well, I don't, I don't think we say abstain. We say absent, right, Stephen?
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, if you.
Well, actually, we don't generally record absences. It would be recorded as, as yes, no abstain, and it would just add up to seven. It wouldn't add up to nine.
Yeah, right.
Oh, so then your percentages are the same in a way?
It would be.
Right.
It'll be.
I, I mean, I'm here and we're there, but.
Yeah, it'll be six to one. It'll be six to one instead of eight to one.
Yeah.
I think the message that people get between six to one versus eight to one is a little bit of a different message. Eight to one seems like an overwhelming support for this recommendation. Six, the more we dilute that, the more we shrink those numbers down, the less emphatic it seems to be. So if these are important issues, then I think trying to get what we've all feel across the best way possible is worthwhile.
Well. I guess we can have a, we can have a motion to to defer this until the January
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth meeting.
Can we?
Or in the absence of such a motion, I think we, we just proceed and, and vote and vote, you know, as, as we started doing.
Regardless of the voting part, can we do the assignation of who reads what today? Can we go ahead and do that part and get it done?
I think Joanne's point is it makes sense to do it all on the same day.
To, to vote on them, but I mean, like to assign who's going to read what, that part? Just one less thing to do on that day.
If we're going to, if we're going to, if we are going to delay this until the next meeting so that people, everyone can cast the vote that they intend to, then we should probably give one the opportunity to to volunteer to read these at the deliberative session at the same time.
I mean, worst case scenario, if someone can't make the twenty-sixth, we could meet, I don't know, the twenty-fifth if everyone's available for half an hour, you know, I just.
It's hard to pull it together in public in Zoom and everything else. When you do it, another session, you still have to warn it in advance and everything else.
Cross our fingers then?
Well, I, I don't want to just put it off. I, I would, I would prefer to have a, a motion to do that because it's on the agenda.
Richard, I just wanted one more point for considering the warrants get published in the annual report, which will be essentially digital until after the deliberative session. That's when I'm going to print a hard copy. But the annual report can't have a copy of this until we have the the tallies on it.
But then that, so that what you're saying then is if we don't have the meeting until that, I can't remember, you said the twenty-fifth, the twenty-sixth and the meeting's on the fifth, then the public won't have very long to review the digital copy before attending the deliberative session. Is that what you're trying to tell us?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the annual report by law and Stephen's on, but I have this report, this thing from the, from the Department of Revenue. The annual report technically is due before the second session, before the voting. So publishing it before the deliberative session is actually something that Lebanon does, but it's not required. It says right here, the annual report for March, for May, March eighth vote. The annual report does not have to be published till March first. So that's what we were going on to make sure that the numbers were all right, but we were going to put out an annual report of the warrant and basically digital and then that we wouldn't have to print it. And then if the numbers change, print it again, kind of thing. So we were going to do a digital copy is, you know, soon as we came in January, after the, after these warrants got approved, these, this warrant got approved.
So you're saying this is the first time we're going to try this, doing it digital before the meeting or voters used to having the copy before the deliberative session?
There have been times that the voters haven't had in the wall before the delivery session. I mean, this is something else we've talked about for, for the benefit of folks who haven't been around. One of the, one of the problems that, that we've run into in the past is, is voters not having all the information they need in order to make an informed decision. And one of the things is, for example, the full cost of the, of the bond issue as well as the, the teacher's contract. I mean, the, the, the language that goes on the ballot simply talks about the financial impact in year one. And we depend upon our annual report in order to get information out, say, okay, here's what it's going to cost in years two and three for the contract. And here's what the, the bond is actually going to cost the first year that, that we're paying principal as well as interest. And voters need to have that information.
May I ask Stephen a question? Is that okay? I, I know that you are giving us guidance on the actual articles, but I've voted and have gotten additional materials from the place in which I'm voting. Is it legal for a school district to provide a letter that's an overview of the decisions made that is handed out with the thing you get when you go to vote? Are you allowed to do that?
Yeah, you mean on the, on voting day or to the deliberative session?
On, on voting day, when you go in and you register, they give you the, your green sheet to fill out. Is it legal for a school board to ask for this information to be handed out with, with the ballot? But they created like a separate letter that provides an overview for people who might not attend board meetings very often or might not have a history of the renovation project?
Yeah, you're, you're talking about a voter guide, basically. And, and yeah, you can do that, but the, the danger is that you have to be careful not to electioneer.
Right.
Or so, or, you know, so to try to persuade a voter to vote a certain way. So if you're going to do something like that, it needs to be very factual. And, you know, if the board recommended a certain article for reasons X, Y, and Z, you can state that. But you really can't go much beyond that. So you can recite the reasons why the school board supported or didn't support an article to give the voters a summary. But you need to be careful that you're not going beyond that and, and being seen as persuading the voters to take a certain action on, on whatever question they're looking at.
I guess all I was saying about that is so we can post this legally, it has to be posted a week before and we'll do that. But any sort of information someone might get their house will probably be around the same timeframe. So that's all I'm trying to say is that if someone's looking for a warrant article to, or a booklet to arrive at their house or to be available online next week, it, it can't happen until after the school board makes, takes their action here. That's all I'm saying.
So what is the will of the board? As, as, as I see it and, and attorney Steve or Tim or Joanne stop me when I, if I, if I misspeak here. I think if we're going to, we have already taken up this as a, as a, as in, in the order of business. And if we're going to put this off until, off any further action until the next board meeting, I think we need to have a motion to do that. In the absence of such a motion, I don't see any option but just to continue what we started and, and do our vote tonight, give Tim his number and let him release the annual report and the, and the full text of the warrant articles.
We could do a summary that goes with the flyer. So I got the flyer from Marinese and I'm bringing it to Financial Facilities on the twentieth. We could put a little summary of board actions on that that will get into the annual report. I would have Stephen look at that little paragraph first to make sure that it's not going in any direction, but could give you the context you want. And it would go into the annual report that does get mailed to every home before the vote. And it could just be a history of the project.
That would just be for the bond issue. That doesn't address the LEA contract.
Richard, do we vote on the motion to table if there is one?
I would want that. I wouldn't call it tabling. I would call it. I'm not a Roberts rule maven. I would.
Would they don't get caught up in Roberts rules and, and motion to postpone discussion rather than table?
Thank you.
Then I'll make a motion to postpone the, this discussion and vote until the January twenty-sixth board meeting.
Motion has been made. Is there a second? Motion by Jenica, second by Aaron. Questions, points to be made, further discussion? All right, let's vote. All in favor of the motion? For, opposed? Three, four to three motion. Fourthly, the motion passes. So we will take this up again at the January twenty-sixth meeting.
Did you want to ask about the Seminary Hill?
I did want to ask about the Seminary Hill. I noticed we, we do not have a warrant article in here pertaining to, to Seminary Hill. We had a couple of versions. We looked at, we had, we had one version that was prepared by our own attorneys that basically was polling the voters, whether or not they wanted us to look into transferring the property to the city. The issue there is that we don't have any information to pass along. We also had another article that was draft that was prepared by Drummond Woodson at the request of the, the city manager or the mayor that used essentially the same language, but included in there a request that the school district be authorized to negotiate such a deal with the, with the city. So, you know, we, we, we really left that up in the air and right now I have no no article at all. And so I guess what I'd be interested in is getting the temperature of the board. Is there an interest in, in polling the public at this point? Or is it premature since we really don't have anything to tell them in terms of what sort of what sort of long-term lease terms would we be looking at? How would the, the auditorium and the gym be managed and, and so forth? But I didn't want to just close this out and close the door on any further action until March of twenty twenty-three without giving the board the opportunity to, to talk about it. Tammy, you and I, I'm going to put you on the spot. You and I were talking about this before the meeting. Do you want to share your thoughts?
Yeah, I, I'm, I, I think it's premature, probably just because I, you're asking them for their input, but they don't know the deal, the details of what you're asking them to say yes or no to or to provide their, their approval of or, or not approval of. I mean, I think I, I think it's probably, for myself, I think it's too early. I mean, I think if we want their true opinion, then they should know what, you know, that they're, that the, the city will take it over, that will pay such and such that they'll do, you know, certain renovations, they'll, I mean, I don't, I wouldn't delve too much into the details, but I think you would want to give them enough so that they could make an informed decision about if the district, if the school district is going to give the building, sell the building in all that. That, those I think where I stand.
Stephen?
I mean, I would, I would agree. I mean, I think the same way, we don't feel armed with enough information to make a decision at this point. How do we ask voters to do the same?
I echo what both of this, what they said, and particularly like Stephen said, we don't even know if, you know, we haven't had the plans come back from the architect and we don't even know if it's feasible for us to fit in the proposed space after, because we haven't seen any plans, so.
I, I agree with, with this all. I mean, I think it is too premature, but I also wonder if it's necessary because we're not, we're, we are not doing any negotiating yet. We're just, we're fact finding, right? We're, we're going to negotiate the terms of an agreement, but we are not deciding on the agreement until we ask the voters yea or nay on that agreement, like until they have that information. So it feels like we're asking them a question that we don't actually need to ask them at all, if at all, but maybe we don't need to ask them until next year.
Yeah, I mean, my, my, my apprehension about asking now is that if the answer is no, it's going to set us back. I mean, I'm personally convinced that this, we could, we could structure a deal here, which is in the district's interest. It would save us significant amount of money. And could also, you know, to help us focus on our, our mission of education rather than maintaining a, a couple of, a building that, that's not an educational building. I think that, I think we, we, it could be a win-win situation here. And in order to do that, we need to do it carefully. And there's nothing to stop us from doing those, that planning, doing those negotiations now. You know, we don't, whereas if we went with just a what do you think article and the answer is no, then we couldn't even do that.
And then we put ourselves in another position where we don't know why people think what they think because we didn't give any information or any context, right? So I, I, I think that's irresponsible of us.
I mean, I think you move forward. Like you said, I mean, I think we just start our due diligence on what their offer is and then, you know, what our counter is. I, I don't think there's any reason you can't continue to negotiate throughout the year and then have all the details done and then presented it, present it like that, or, you know, whatever details you're going to present to the public.
Yep, I wanted to bring it up because I wanted the board, the, to give the board the opportunity to at least talk about it so that when its absence is noted, that we, we we have a rationale for why that case. Okay, no further action. And I would just point everyone to the petition warrant article, article number six to see if the school district will vote to discontinue the school resource officer program created in two thousand and four. That's, that's not going to require any sort of board action because it's a citizen's petition. And everyone needs to be aware that it's there. And I think at some, at some point, probably before the deliberative session, we probably ought to get a legal opinion on you know, just to underscore, this is advisory.
So I, I did send this to Stephen in advance and, and he is prepared to, to talk about it this evening.
Wonderful. Go for, go for it, Stephen.
Hey, thank you. So you kind of stole my thunder, Mr. Chair. This is in fact, an advisory article, if it is adopted. And the reason for that is by, by state law, the school board is given certain authority. And, and one of the things that the school board has given authority to do is take appropriate measures to protect the health and safety of the people that are in school buildings. And so because that power is given to the school board, the district meeting cannot take it away from. the district meeting cannot take it away from the school board and cannot make decisions that have been already granted to the school board, to to all of you. And so the the intent of this article, you know, is 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 pretty clear, but unfortunately, it's not something that will tie your hands if it is in fact passed on in March.
Thank you. I didn't steal your thunder. You said it much better than I did.
Right, ask a question?
Yeah, I am, Jay.
So can you tell me how the mechanics of this petition warrant article work? Like, was there a certain number of signatures someone has to have? Has someone vetted that they actually were all Lebanon residents that signed this petition?
So the petition was dropped off and then sent over to the city's clerk. And the clerk verified that there were over twenty five signatures, which is what's needed. So that part has been done.
And presumably the clerk verified that those were people in Lebanon.
Correct.
Residents of Lebanon.
Registered voters.
Registered voters, thank you.
So Stephen used the words, if this is adopted, it was that, is that your way of saying if it's presented to us in accordance with the rules? I mean, I, it sounded like the way you you started the sentence was that this is optional, but I don't think that is correct.
It has to go on the warrant. Yeah, because it it has the a threshold number of registered voters as verified by the town clerk. It 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 ought to go on the warrant. If you don't put it on the warrant, there's a statutory provision that says that you can be found guilty of a violation. And you could also probably expect a lawsuit. So those are two, two good reasons to go ahead and put it on the warrant.
Works for me. Okay, anything else on the warrant articles for now?
I just wanted to, you guys might have forgotten about it, but several people asked me about a warrant article related to impact fees going directly into the capital reserve fund. I checked with Drummond Woodson, and I also checked with the DRA. And they confirmed and quoted me the statute that said that you, unfortunately, you have to put money in year by year on the warrant through the voter, the the action of the voter. So you don't see a warrant about that because there's no way to do it in perpetuity. You have to put a warrant every year saying, can you put money in the capital reserve fund? So.
So what we could do, and and this is, this is an issue that's not going to go away, because just even in today's paper, you see there's yet another residential development being proposed on the Route one twenty corridor. Good to see this was intended for median income working people. That's great to see. But, you know, the, over the, over the, the next few years, you know, we're probably going to see a significant uptick. There's not going, as you know, there's not going to be any way to predict this. So I guess there would be nothing to stop us, though, from receiving that money and sequestering it, not spending it, and then tacking it on to whatever, whatever other unexpended funds we might have at the end of the year and going to the voters and say, instead of, you know, after the, well, what we would customarily do is after we give the first million back to the voters, we want to put another million in the capital reserve, we could conceivably be in the position of saying we want to put, you know, a million or a million and a half in the capital reserve, right? Right. Now, whereas we could do it that way, correct?
Right, that's essentially.
Just hang on to it and then.
Yeah, I just didn't like their phrasing, hang on to it, so. But I think I know what you mean. We get the money in September, it sits there, of course, it sits there, and it didn't, you know, we put a, I tell you, looks like because we got this extra revenue, more revenue than we thought, we can put, you know, we can make the warrant article to say a million and a half dollars or something because of the, because of the impact fees we got over the last six months. Yes, that's, but I envision.
Okay. All right.
Just one last thing. Tim, Article four. You just need to capitalize school district the first time, just like the other ones.
It's getting less important to me.
I know.
Thank you.
Stephen, thank you very much for joining us. I believe that you're going to be with us at our deliberative session, so we'll be able to see you then.
Yes, I will be there.
And if you wouldn't mind sharing back the host, that would be great.
Uh, will do. Let me see here.
Thank you, Stephen, very much.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. And thank you also for moving up the discussion a little bit tonight. I appreciate that.
All right, we will now move on. Did you, did you get your control back?
No, not yet. I'm I'm working on that.
Unwilling to.
Not unwilling.
Relinquish control, Stephen.
How do I do that?
It gets by my name and it and it gives you options and the top hand, the top one says, or it scrolls down, it says, make host.
Ah, there it is. Okay.
There you go. I'm all set. Thanks so much. Have a good night.
Moving on to SAU leadership team updates, superintendent update, please.
Well, what's interesting is, um, I believe my assistant put in, oh, I'm in the wrong package. My assistant did perfectly. Great, that was my mistake. Okay, January twelfth. So I've attended virtual DPS meetings, commissioners meetings, communications about COVID cases. We created the dashboard, ongoing communications. I met with the nurses, some administrators in Concentric today. I visited all schools, providing the test kits to the nurses. And as you can see, a lot of communications going on. Right before this board meeting, I sent out a daily update and then let people know that with things that are changing on an hourly basis, students that can come back in, staff that can come back in, students and staff that are out, it's beyond feasible for our nurses to be able to on a daily basis do a tabulation. So we're going to, we're going to keep the dashboards, but it'll be updated weekly. So that on Friday, it'll be for the week of X, we've had X numbers of students test positive, X number of staff test positive for that week. And then I let people know that my daily COVID cases, I'm going to keep that title. And if they prefer not to read those, that's quite okay. Some people like all that information. Some people prefer not, but if there's something big that happens, like the change from ten days to five, I would send out a separate letter and my superintendent's letter, so that if they don't read that COVID one, I'm making sure they're still getting that information. We learned today through Concentric that the first test that's actually done in the school is by them is a PCR test. So there's confusion as it was as an antigen test for the first round or PCR, it is a PCR test. We will also continue to follow CDC guidelines. Because what can happen is if you have a PCR test, if you have a person that tests positive, up to ninety days, they can still continue to test positive. So if you are a student or staff member that tests positive in one of our pools, you're not going to be tested again for ninety days, because you're going to get a, you could potentially get false positives, and then we have to go through this whole thing. But if a person has symptoms, we're recommending a home test or an antigen test. So we clarified the CDC guidelines. We're all on the same page. I so appreciate, oh my gosh, our nurses are amazing and the administrators and finding time to meet and talk through all of this. It's very complicated. So that was part of the discussions that we had today. The S R two and S R three, Tim and I continue to work with the DOE on that. We have S R three approval. And Tim is updating the S R two, so hopefully we'll get approval on that fairly soon. We do have, you know, we know the projects that we're going to be moving forward with. The renovation projects, we've had a lot of meetings, had a meeting today that included Donna Lane, and she's the Davis Bacon consultant. So we had, and I wrote Eckert in here at some place, it's Ekman, I don't know what I was thinking, but Ekman Construction, Donna, Paul, Tim, and me, I think that was who was on it. We we walked through, what are the expectations that we know of for S R funds? What are the expectations for Davis Bacon? So we're all on the same page before we start hiring the subcontractors and going in that direction. As far as the project itself, bids through Ekman, which is the construction management team, and Paul Marinese will be going out in February. And then we should be getting them back early March. And we will wait and see what those numbers are, because construction costs are changing on a daily basis, whether it's steel, whether you can get the materials, whether it's the cost for labor. So we will be keeping everyone in the loop about what the cost is for the Mount Lebanon School project. Yep, done a lot of work since August with the equity surveys and and D A O, pretty much daily, if not more than once, communication committee work. We won't be able to meet for policy tomorrow because two of our board members won't be able to attend. So we'll, we're scheduled out for February. P N N, just so you know, we're going to do lag and L S A negotiations this spring, and then we'll do L S S in the fall. Um, Richard and I talked about the track, and we're going to have ongoing communications. We have a meeting on the twentieth. E C, I had a chance to talk with Lisa Scolero and with Jenica regarding the upcoming E C meeting. Handbooks will be coming to the board on the twenty sixth. And what I suggested and Jenica thought would be a good idea, or that I asked Lisa to kind of create a flow chart of each school and where there could be enrichment or acceleration supports. So we have a general sense of the district, where does that happen? And are there gaps? And is, and is there equity in that? So that I think that's what she'll be bringing forward for that conversation. Sabbatical review committee, we are having another meeting with a person in the next couple of weeks. And there is going to be eleven in high school sabbatical request. And Sarah Bennett is focusing on Shakespeare. We're very excited about her thoughts. And so she will be coming to the board on January twenty sixth. So it'd be great to talk about that kind of a a topic. I met with Richard and I, whenever people send me an email, I'm trying to get you the information as quickly as I can. Lots of topics have also been sending you news articles or things like that that I thought might be of interest to you. So we talked in advance about the warrant articles, and I tried to organize the meeting tonight so that Stephen was prepared to answer the questions. There's the Davis Bacon consultant. My annual report has been submitted. Today I talked with David Brooks and I also talked with Sean Mulholland. With David Brooks, we talked about the parking situation at middle school. You might have read the article today. We're doing everything we can to try to make that drop off pickup as smooth as possible. It's just a small area with a lot of cars coming in and out. And he was impressed with all the things that we've been doing. And then I talked to Sean about another topic, but then he and I said, why don't we get the city and the school district together and maybe we can problem solve? Because one of the things in the article is putting a traffic light. But you can't put a traffic light because that's considered a highway. So we want to put together not a, not a white paper, but hey, here's all the things that we've tried to do, and here are some things that we'll continue to try to focus on to keep the parking area safe for our students. And we're going to do that a couple of weeks. I also attended an evening meeting. It was the Lebanon City Pedestrian Bike Committee. And they wanted to know if we were going to change any site work for Hanover Street and the high school, and I had to let them know that we weren't doing any site work. But if they had thoughts about the pedestrian and bike pathways to our schools, to please put something together, and we'd be happy to bring it to the board. SA office meetings, L M S meetings, DOE monthly meetings, and then the Mount Lab principal search, you might want to update on that. We, the, it closed over the weekend. We had many applications. Jack, John, and I vetted through, particularly looking for candidates who could be certified in New Hampshire, who had elementary experience and who had leadership experience. I met with Mount Lab staff virtually today, gave them an update, talked with them about the survey that they filled out, about characteristics and what I heard about their their input. We will be holding interviews, calling people tomorrow. The potential date is the nineteenth. And then depending on if there's a finalist or multiple finalist, we might bring them back to visit Mount Lab for a day. And I'll probably, if all goes well, bring forward a nomination, the first board meeting in February, so we can have closure on that. This said the twentieth, but something came up on the twentieth, so that's why I'm thinking the nineteenth, I had to change that date a little bit. And then I'll figure out what the snow date would be. Any questions?
Question, Sir Joanne? I have a couple. With regard to the the health and safety matters, I I know you've gotten a lot of communications from from parents and other community members about the uptick in COVID cases in the community generally that's reflected in the schools. And I just think it would be, what I'm interested in in is to establish, as far as we know, we have not seen any clusters originating in the schools. Is that accurate to say we haven't seen any evidence of of transmission within, within the classrooms?
There might have been a case, but it's hard to know with that case if the student was positive because of interactions with other students outside of school or within school. And what's interesting, it used to be a cluster was kind of a big thing. And now it's multiple clusters of three or more, you know, people, it's just the whole language of that has changed. I would say that the mitigating layers that we have in place have been very beneficial for supporting not having transmission in our schools. It also has been helpful, substitutes have mentioned that they're wanting to come to our school because we do have masks. We do all these layers in place, whereas in another district, they might not feel as comfortable if they were, they were not masking. So in some ways, there's multiple reasons. It'd be interesting to see what happens after February break. I don't know if we're going to have, if we'll be past it, if there'll be another variant, if, you know, we will be moving on at that point. But I think between now and kind of post February break is going to be key for our district and other districts as well, when people travel and they come back, if if we're all going to be post the the concern that we have right now with with other variants that might come through. So we continue to follow the guidance from D H H S, put those things, put those in place. And it'd be great at some point to be able to talk about later on, if there are some things we can take away, if the if the numbers decrease or not in the, in a spike, that would be great.
So I guess following on that same topic, how, I mean, you saw in the papers, they grant them and other districts have had to close this week due to staffing issues. So how, how are we doing on with regards to staffing and staying open?
We're day by day, have offered to sub if needed. And what our principals are doing is they're checking the the frontline before they go to bed. And they're hoping when they wake up that more people haven't put in for absences, because they're, we're right on the that balance every morning. And we are fortunate to be able to continue on as long as we have, and I hope we can continue to offer five days. Everything is saying the importance of schools, you know, being, being open five days as as long as you can. So we're going to keep doing that.
I just want to add that I appreciate the the fact that, you know, you, Joanne, the administrators and teachers and nurses are doing so much to help contain the spread and that our substitutes appreciate that. But I think we should also keep in mind, on the other hand, the kids who are almost approaching two years of disrupted schooling and masks and distancing and recess zones. And so like you say, hopefully after the surge, it'd be really great if we could think about ways to sort of reduce those mitigation efforts and give them a more normal existence. Because I think at this point, it's becoming really important to the kids.
I just had a clarification question about the, how we're doing the five day. Are we having people test to come back at home or here?
Yes.
Okay, that, and how does that work?
It works in the sense that they are, my brain is going, what did the nurses say? So if I'm looking up, I'm trying to channel the nurses right now. It's an, it's a layer that D H H S said we could do, we put it in, and I believe it would be an antigen test. Because if we PCR, you could still be testing, I don't look in MJ, yes, okay, got it. So yes, we are asking for some sort of negative test to return and no symptoms, including fever for twenty four hours. We are not forcing students or staff back after the five days, if they're not feeling well or for other reasons. But for many students and staff, that has, will help them to be able to come back.
Anything else on COVID?
So I think, and I think I saw in one of the nurses newsletters, it looks like you've taken the enhanced stance off of the D H H S to. to require, to consider children that are eligible for the booster that haven't had the booster to now have to go back to quarantine if their household contact. Is that correct?
I don't know that.
So I guess that would be helpful to clarify because I know that a lot of different districts around the state in both New Hampshire and Vermont are kind of taking that stance. And I read that as, I thought, in the DHHS, that HON 53 or whatever that you sent. That that was optional, but then I thought I read someone, one of the newsletters that it was required. So now that this, as of this week, the kids can finally find places to get the boosters, it would be helpful to know that as a parent.
Would you mind emailing me that question and I'll get to the right resources and let the whole board know the answer? Thank you.
I think it'd be important to put in the community update as well, because that's, you know, they were cut, parents have been playing by one set of rules and all of a sudden, oops.
However, I can get information out and try to make it easier for people. I definitely want to do that. Thank you.
Anything else? On the renovation projects, I, I noticed you did mention seeking permits. And I, I heard that, that we needed a, an easement regarding snow storage so they could stage things. And I understand that the city did that post haste for us, which was, which was good.
Correct. Yeah, Marinese is working with the city in regard to permittinging and things like that.
Good example of the two branches of government working together. Anything else for Joanne? All right, let's move on to the business administrator update.
I included in your packet expenditure report through December. Just try to look over it and see if anything sticks out to me. And then I actually kind of wonder what sticks out to you. So you know, we're pretty, we're on par with last year, which isn't the greatest. Like I want to be better ahead of last year as far as spending, but I was looking at what's not been spent yet. And we have, so again, four and a half million dollars. Wow, that's so much money, but there's, there's a, there's a lot. We try to encumber as much as we can, especially in salary and benefits, but there's a lot that doesn't get encumbered. For example, we don't, maybe we should, but we don't encumber every penny of our lawyer's fees. We encumber a piece of it and then we change it. We change it if we need to. I couldn't cover it all and look like it's all spent. And then you'd be like, well, that's better. But so I'm looking at like legal fees, 40, 100,000, no, 40, $60,000 in legal fees. Building specific repairs, just 40,000 still not spent. We do have a lot of supply money that's not spent and I'll be digging into that. Between regular red and athletic supplies, there's $160,000 not spent. So so there, there are some opportunities that we need to see. Why, why we have $100,000 in regular red supply is not bought, you know? For example, maybe we bought the stuff last year with, with COVID kind of suppressing some of our expenditure. So now that budget is kind of behind, we will be digging in to see where the problem areas, where are the opportunities? But what do we, what do we need to purchase? Or what do we, you know, maybe if we purchase them, then we need to start looking at that line. And the wage side, there's a lot of wages that can't be, that can't be encumbered ahead of time. Substitutes, for example, we don't encumber our, our coaches until the season shows up. So there's $52,000 in coaches and activities that will be spent, or most of it will be spent for spring sports. And transfer, bus transportation, same thing with field trips and athletics. That stuff really isn't getting covered ahead of time. There will be $70,000 in principal savings and there will be about $50,000 in custodial savings, just because we still don't have a full custodial staff. We were, we were able to add a custodian last week. So now we are in search of only one more. But it's, it's, it's a process. Like I mentioned, we have $135,000 less, left in substitute, just so you know that, that the budget is 335. So we spent $200,000 in substitutes so far. So we're spending, looks like every penny of our substitute budget and maybe a little bit more. Which is last year, we didn't spend nearly as much with us being remote and stuff. But so if this goes to the question about staffing, we're, we're hiring the subs as soon as we get them and using them right away. So I guess I'd wait to see what are questions you might have. I couldn't anticipate further than that.
Questions for Tim? Yep. Another quick change to the agenda. I'd like to move item 10C, Discussion of Lebanon High School Winter Athletic Update to right now. You guys have been very, very patient. Thank you.
Remember we said we'd be back and asking for perhaps some allowances that regarding masks, altitude rates went down, cases decreased, and that's certainly not the case. But we will, so we will be wearing masks. We have conversations with our coaches regularly, with our players about wearing them well. Not like this, not like this. And we had all kinds of reasons why they're not worn well. We think we're getting better and by the time we get really good, I think the season will be over. Basketball season has three weeks. Hockey has five. I leave. Northern and Alpine Stevie's outdoors. Hockey. So I think that's, that's it. So we're going to continue to wear masks. They are somewhat deterrent even if worn here. And I can think it's being well, it's one echological sentence. It's been a long haul. Our whole culture of our school, they're shifting a little bit because of, because of distancing, because of how we do lunch, which was kind of the centerpiece of our, of our day socially. Not only have our kids been resilient, I mean, our, our teachers, but our kids really have. I mean, we have students, just a handful, who need to be reminded regularly, but otherwise it's remarkable how long they've done. So I agree. So we're going to continue to wear masks. Currently, we have four family members that each player gets to bring. What we'd like to do is make it four guests. We're really in a tough position, Mike and I, because we know so many folks, you know, people are, are strategizing about how to come and watch games. We really feel that we are policing that and we're not sure it's at all necessary. So what we have, the people who collect money, is we have names of people who, players have identified who are going to come and watch the games. We'd like it not just to be family members, but, but guests as well. We think we can do that. We have space in our gym. In regard to students as spectators, right now, there are 20 schools in Division Two reporting. 14 schools have no limit on the number of fans. Six schools have identified four fans per player. What we'd like to do is have 30 students. We sign up in the morning, run in the afternoon, come and watch our games. Our, our, our players want to have them come. Our students want to go to the games. We think we can do it safely. It's not like we're turning people away at the door for those of you who can watch our TV or who attend. We think we can put 30 students with masks, separate them and have them and bring a little bit of community into the gym. Hanover up the road has 450 people that they're going to allow to the gym. We're so far from that, we think what we're asking is reasonable, of course.
Two questions. One is having been at many of the basketball games, I think it's actually quite impressive how our athletes stay masked through, through their games. Okay, obviously I'm, have a vested interest in it, my daughter being on one of the teams, but I watch those athletes and they're, our, our athletes are really, really good at it. And that obviously attests to their integrity and the advice they're getting from their coaches. But what I do wonder, and I wonder what we can do about that, or is there anything we can do about it? There's a difference in what I see our athletes doing and what many of the visiting teams do.
Yeah, so my answer to that, what we can do, and not about at all the games, I have to say, if you are, if you're athletes, whether they're better than others. And we did, we reminded the wrestling coaches for the other night, that you need to ask your athletes to pull their masks up. We can ask those coaches to be more vigilant about it. You need to ask the players to please pull them up. We made it clear that we don't have the expectation that they have to wear masks. But most of them in meetings with the, the E, that's pretty much what they agree to do. In reality, when, when the night we had a hockey game, the, the team and the coach showed up, they're not, so we ran around and found masks for them. So, you know, there's a communication there. And then again, there's the police and they're not used to doing that. Where I think that, that's where we're, we're heading now. In terms of playoffs, I would say that's probably going to be the same situation where the team that is normally, that we don't normally, that's the normal wear mask. Particularly possibly when we're away, they don't wear them. We do, for that, right? So when they come here, a lot of times they may have to do this two or three times a year. So problems that we're having with kids that are doing it daily all the time. I imagine it's much harder for a coach for the first time or the second time a year. And then tomorrow, after the night, then they go back to not having to wear them when they're participating. So it, it's a, the problem, it's an issue, but we don't, it's the expectation. It's one thing to put it out there, it is one thing, but to try to be on that, I'd actually have to put somebody with their coach every moment to say, hey, I felt like that, I get that one, I'll put that one, get that. And playoffs, it's a little easier because the athletic director comes with, with the team. And so we can just take care of it. But I, I don't, I don't, I don't see this as a problem. I do see it as a favor. When people look at it, they may say, then why are these guys not wearing them? Well, we, we made it pretty clear that it's not our expectation, but the athletic director said, now we'll do this. We'll, we'll do this for you now that the actual, the personal about it isn't that way.
Thank you. And the other question I had was, do you think that there is sufficient room in the stands to have 30 students and the four guests per athlete and still have enough space to not have people sitting on top of each other?
I'm usually about 25 students and 750 square foot room. So there's a lot more space. We're certainly not at six feet in any of our classrooms. But I think we can do that well. And Mike and I talked about, there's not a team that doesn't show up, at least the company's where masks. So there are the expectations there, but we don't parade them more than, more than less.
Thank you.
Anything else for Mike and Ian? Do you want a positive action from us or do you just want us not, we just, you didn't, you don't hear any objections, so you can go ahead and make your change?
We want to do it on, we've talked about actually a change. Every time we come here, we have a different opinion two days before than we do now. We've talked a lot about it, process, and we think we're good. We're going to put it in play unless you object to it. Which doesn't seem like that's the case. So, you know, just please, we are as vigilant as we decently can be. Have these conversations with our kids all day long, in the evening, at the games, with the coaches.
Well, yeah, I heard no objections. So, gosh, thanks.
Thanks.
Hey, moving back to committee updates. Finance and Facilities next meets on Thursday, January 20th. Aaron, I think we've reported, you've reported since the last meeting, yeah. Policy Committee was scheduled for tomorrow. It's going to be rescheduled for February. EC met on December 20th. Is there anything to report?
We just went over the changes to the handbooks and the high school student, what's it called? Program studies. Thank you, Lil.
Okay. Next meeting, February 21st, SAU. PNM met on the 23rd. Nothing else is scheduled until the spring, I guess, when we're launching into those other two negotiations. Student Wellness Advisory Committee met on January 5th. Any update to be reported to the board?
I think it's Kristen.
It was Kristen.
That's Kristen. Okay. Next meeting is in May. Harvard Area Career Technical Center meets next in March. Area Committee meets, meets in Plainfield on February the 22nd. City School Joint Task Force will meet on Thursday, January 27th. We, we have a, we have an invitation. I did not see an agenda and Joanne, you asked for anything we wanted to see on the agenda. So I guess if we, those of us who are attending or any board member, if there's something you want discussed, please let Joanne and I know. Track Fundraising Subcommittee has been at work organizing and planning for a launch for fundraising. Meeting again next Tuesday. Here. Yeah, Tuesday, January 18th here. Okay, we've already had our winter athletics update. And we do have a series of first readings. And if you could just indulge me for a minute to get these in front of me, since Kristen is not here, to walk us through. These are all first readings, which means this is an opportunity to ask any questions, if you have had the opportunity to go through and digest them. And they will come forward at the next board meeting or some following board meeting for second reading, reading and, and approval. So there aren't that many of them and some of them have to do with policies that have been withdrawn. So I think we can just quickly go through them individually. And Joanne, maybe you and I and maybe Tim on a couple of these, we can do a tag team here. Policy DAF, Administration of Federal Grant Funds, my understanding, and Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, I said these are all changes that are necessary in order to be in compliance with law.
Correct.
No votes are required for first readings, but if anyone has a question, a comment or a suggestion, please just stick your hand up. Otherwise I'll keep on going. Okay, so that's Policy DAF. And if I don't see you kind of like that, please. Sometimes I put my head down and I don't see a harm, arm being waved. Policies ADB and GBEC, it's the same policy that appears in two places. And so it has two different names. This relates to drug-free workplace and drug-free schools. This is a revised policy. Extensively revised.
Yes.
And I think we simply accepted New Hampshire School Board Association's language.
I have a question. Do we have this drug-free awareness program for employees? That's in 5C?
Does that come through our insurance support thing or is that something different? Or we could look into it?
Look into it. I mean, we have a lot of drug-free, yeah, drug-free employee assistance program stuff, but I don't know if that qualifies for this.
I just never heard of it. So I just wonder if we do, and since we're adopting the policy, I'd like us to actually have it.
Yeah.
Somewhere.
Okay. First reading of Policy IMBCR, Alternative Credit Options. This is a revision. Joanne, I'll rely on you to talk about this briefly.
So I believe that this is a policy that's unique to Lebanon, that we created our own. It's not a New Hampshire School Board one. And so I asked Bonnie Robinson and Joy Golden to take a look. And they only had the change on the second page, 3A. When the student completes an online course, the yellow coordinator will send it from drive to the Tory mounted student. So it's unique to us and the language is unique to us. And it's an R because it And it's an R because it connects with the New Hampshire School Board policy one.
Okay. Uh, first read of policy IKF, revision of high school graduation requirements. And I believe this is to comply with New Hampshire state laws, is that correct?
That is correct. And our high school is aware of the civics exam and the timeframe for creating that exam. We also coordinated and had the New Hampshire School Board Association Executive Director and one of their attorneys talk with us and yes, the facts, uh, information has to stay in this policy.
But there is an opt-out, correct?
Oh yeah, by the top, but the language has to stay. There was a question of if we could remove it all.
Yes. First read for two, uh, policies that are being proposed for withdrawal. Uh, policy GBGAH, HIV/AIDS withdrawn by the School Board Association because it is encapsulated in other policies, is that correct, Joanne?
Yes, the, the first two are under, going to be under communicable diseases, which is a whole new direction that they're heading. So that's why these were withdrawn.
Right, and that also is, uh, policy IHAMC. HIV/AIDS. And technical assistance advisory JFA are withdrawn by School Board Association. This is because it is part of.
At the time, there wasn't a lot of information, so they created this technical assistance. But since then, it's, the information is much more easily available, so they withdrew it.
Okay, that completes all the first reads, the policies. Um, we now have some acknowledgements. Uh, the board needs to acknowledge five hundred dollar gift card donation from Amazon to Mount Lebanon School, from the Mount Lebanon School PTO. We acknowledge and thank the PTO. We also acknowledge a thousand dollar donation from Hannaford Helps to Lebanon High School. And with our, with our deep appreciation. We had a public hearing because of the size of the contribution, uh, before the meeting tonight. On, except on the five thousand dollar donation from the Burn Foundation for the Lebanon High School Model UN dues and fees. And we now need to officially accept that generous donation. We have a motion for that, please.
I'll make a motion to accept the five thousand dollar donation from the Burn Foundation for LHS Model UN dues and fees.
Motion by Lillian.
I'll second.
Second by MJ. What else there to say, except again, we thank the Burn Foundation for their generous support for so many of our programs and particularly for the, the Model UN. All in favor? Unanimous, seven to zero. Future agenda items, uh, board member recommendations or questions. Before we take some from the committee, from the board, let me just mention that, uh, I've been in touch recently with Senator Sue Prentice, who has, you probably know, is a member of the, uh, the Senate Education Committee. Um, and has been, uh, very concerned about, uh, some of the measures that have been passed through the, uh, New Hampshire Legislature. And some of the others that have been proposed for the coming legislative session in both the Senate and the House. She's a, she's a friend of the district and graciously has agreed to come and meet with us to take our questions and let us know what we can do to, uh, to help her do her job. Uh, we've invited her to the next board meeting in February. Uh, we, as far as I know, we haven't heard back from her yet, but, uh, uh, my understanding is that she's anxious to do that. So if, if we can't get her in at the next board meeting, we'll get her in at the one after that. Just wanted to let everyone know that was coming. Are there any recommendations or questions for future agenda items from the rest of the board? Okay. Important dates and announcements, next board meeting is Wednesday, the 26th of January, right here. There will probably be a non-public, uh, meeting. I think we've gotten in the habit of doing that before the meeting so that we're not here until 10 o'clock at night. If that is necessary, we'll, um, we'll let everyone, I'll let everyone know, um, as early as I can that that's coming up. But otherwise, it's scheduled for 6:30. Deliberative session Saturday, the 5th of February at 9:00 AM in the Hanover Street School Gym. Uh, there is a snow date, I don't recall when, but.
Oh, have her add it, it's that Monday.
It's the Monday, following Monday. Other business, I sent out an email to everyone about superintendent evaluation. If we could start working on that, I would like very much, I proposed the timeline. If anyone has any problems with that, please let me know. But if we could get that, get that done and, uh, and in hand by the next time we meet, that would be great. And I, I can, I can see the progress, so, um, you know, I, I may reach out to, to folks and gently nudge you to start looking at it. Uh, any other business?
Just that at the next meeting, we need to look at our calendar because we're unique with the March vote date. You have to wait the rest of the week and then we hold a meeting like a Monday after. It's not that second and fourth. So I didn't, I want to put that on people's radar so they had it on their personal schedules when that meeting will be.
No other business? Motion to adjourn, please. Stephen, thank you. And Lillian, all in favor? Unanimous.